I hereby call this meeting of the Santa Barbara County Board of Education to order. And the first thing I'm going to do is announce that Spanish interpretation of the board meeting is available, and we have our interpreter.
This is a bilingual message and will be repeated in English. Este es un mensaje bilingüe y será repetido en inglés. Buenas tardes. Para proveer acceso lingüístico, nosotros hemos proporcionado interpretación simultánea al español. Si ustedes quisieran escuchar esta presentación en español, ahorita les avisaremos cómo hacerlo. Mi colega Hugo Santos y yo, Regina Santos Moreno, estaremos interpretando la junta de hoy. Si usted desea escuchar esta presentación en español, debería elegir ese idioma para escuchar. Si está usando una computadora, verá un icono en la parte inferior de su pantalla en forma de globo que dice "Interpretación". Haga clic ahí y seleccione español. Si usted está usando un iPad o un dispositivo similar, localice el menú de tres puntos, haga clic ahí, elija "Interpretación de idiomas" o "Language Interpretation", elija español, haga clic en "Done" o "Finalizar". Por último, les quisiéramos recordar a nuestros oradores y presentadores que hablen de volumen alto para que los podamos escuchar, que usen sus micrófonos y, por favor, hablar a un paso moderado. Gracias. So, in order to provide language access, we have provided simultaneous interpretation to Spanish. If you would like to listen to this presentation in Spanish, we are available to do so. My colleague Hugo Santos and I, Regina Santos Moreno, will be interpreting for today's meeting. If you are bilingual, you do not have to click anything. And if you prefer to listen to the event in English, you will have to select that language in order to hear that language. If you are on a laptop, you will see a globe icon at the bottom right of your screen. Click on that globe icon that says "Interpretation" and select "English." If you are on an iPad or a similar device, locate the three-dot menu and select "Language Interpretation" and click "Done." Finally, we would like to remind our presenters and speakers to speak with a loud and clear voice, to please use your microphones, and to please speak at a moderate pace. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, Mr. Porter would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, I would like to, thank you.
Good.
So, in honor of President's Day, I thought we'd have just a short sentiment today before we salute the flag. And this is from John Quincy Adams, who I don't know much about. But he said, "And this is in light of the SBCEO logo, which now says 'Service and Leadership' on the logo. His quote is, 'If your actions inspire others to dream more, learn more, do more, and become more, you are a leader.'" I think everybody in this room professes that kind of leadership. So please join me to be prepared in our reading. I pledge allegiance to the Prime of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in the resolve of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. And now, Anna, would you like to do a roll call?
Sure, Mrs. Cardy. Here. Mrs. Dany? Mrs. DeWard? Ms. Erman?
Here.
Mrs. Frost? Mr. Howell? And Mr. Porter? Thank you.
We have one change to the agenda on our Student Advisory Council presentation. We have one student who will be presenting and talking with us today instead of two. Anything else on the agenda? Okay. And moving on to President and Board comments. I would like to acknowledge the wonderful growth in our social media presence that we have had. I think just about every day, I'm seeing something on my Facebook page from SBCEO, and it's good stuff. It's all really good stuff. It's great to see the education fairs and to see our superintendent at the schools visiting with the students. And just that increase in social visibility, I think, is wonderful, spot-on. There were two events in North County this, well, actually, three, this last week that were featured. And I know we have two people here who attended both of them and would like to perhaps fill us in on OCAF, which is the Orkut Children's Arts Foundation, and also the brand-new arts complex at Allen Hancock College. So which one would you like to take?
I'm going to tag on to the Hancock event, because I know I wasn't able to attend OCAF, and I'm sure that Deborah was there. So you've heard me blather for years about this wonderful facility. It finally came to fruition with the official ribbon-cutting last Friday on the rainiest evening of the world. It rained all day and all night, and there were over 1,000 people that showed up to support that. Deborah Hood's husband is the department head. He was tearful as he welcomed people. He was even more tearful when he was beautifully surprised by his two college-age daughters who came from Boston and Northern California to celebrate their dad's fruition of this building. And if you haven't had an opportunity to go through it, I'm happy to. I know Deborah would be happy to, or even Judy, who's a fellow Foundation Board member. We would be happy to arrange for a tour, because you can't say enough in the short time we have here about this facility, other than all of the arts are now housed in one two-story, 88,000-square-foot facility that is phenomenal. So that's all I'm going to say.
And I'll add that tours can be arranged through the Foundation, Hancock College Foundation office, the Director, John Hooton. You contact him, he will arrange tours as well. And I would like to call on Deborah to talk about OCAF. It's been a part of, yes, it's been a part of the Santa Maria Valley, which includes Orkut, or Orkut, which includes the Santa Maria Valley, depends on where your zip code is, for a few decades.
Yeah, thank you, sure. I, we were trying to think of how long Judy, that evening at the OCAF Gala. It's, we're at about 20 years, for sure. It's something the Orkut Children's Arts Foundation came into being when that school district, Orkut School District, just felt like they prioritized arts education for their students. And so this foundation raises money to supplement those very things, in the way of grants, teacher grants, field trips, as well as other projects. And again, the Gala is something that is annual, and we've been lucky to do it and attend for many years, my husband and I. We were Board members for a good, so just as a lot of things go in Santa Maria, it's a dinner, and a silent auction, and a live auction, and really just with the thought of, there's a saying, "Kids need art." So they just celebrate that. So Dr. Holly Eads was very, very present and very, very grateful.
The organization was driven by the parents, which I, you know, it's, and even though we know kids grow up and go through school and move on, there's always been parents that have just come in and continued the work. So it's something to be touted. Thank you, Deborah. And Board comments? Maggie, you've had your turn.
I was just going to say that the double- I was participated on Tuesday in the employee recognition, and Zoom is not the same as live, but it was very good. And very well orchestrated the timing, Anna and Susan. It was a lot of people to talk, and it worked very well.
Yes, thank you. I was able to be in attendance at the first five school governance reconvening, and it was really a worthwhile gathering, and Bridget Boblitz and her ECE team were there as well. It, I think the overall tenor in the room was districts, prepare for your incoming TK classes, and it is not just simply kindergarten light. They really underscored the importance of play, both free and unstructured and facilitated play, and how that bears out learning that doesn't otherwise occur, experiential learning. And they did a really interesting couple of infographics that were talking about windows of opportunity, when kids are able to acquire a second language, when their motor skills are developed, sensory, and it's all first five, obviously, that was the message. But also, the onset of mental health issues in youth correlates very, very closely with the decreased number of minutes of play and increased number of instructional minutes, which is not what we want to hear, but yet, there it is. So anyway, that was a great opportunity. The other thing I wanted to mention is, I see the annual dinners coming up, and we're going to be honoring Joanna Hendricks. I was really thrilled that she consented to be our keynote speaker at the Carp Children's Project on March 22nd at a breakfast. So she'll be, she'll be talking to parents about both preschool, family engagement, and using all the sensory motor tools in the toolbox. So we thank Joanna.
I had the opportunity to be on a Zoom today with the county's Continuation of Care Committee, which is, they work homelessness for kids as well as families and individuals. And there was an election, and Bridget Boblitz was elected as the K-12 Education Board Member. And I imagine that's why she's not here. She's probably on a Zoom with that Board right now, I believe. So a lot of really great stuff. I think one disappointing statistic, though, was, you know, they showed how homelessness increased in our county between 2019 and 2022, but for kids, the, and this is homelessness not as we count in education, which is a very broad definition, but the county's very narrow definition. But even then, the number of children who are homeless now increased by 87% between 2019 and 2022. So a lot of work to do, a lot of thoughts on how we deal with that in education across the county and the districts, but also our very, our special needs kids. So I know Bridget's the right person to be working that, and I look forward to working with her, as how we could approach that from both directions. The other is, DOS Williams invited county-level elected officials. Susan, I think you were invited. I don't know if you went or not, but they were all recognized. I guess my disappointment was that our county-level elected officials were not invited. So to Nadra, Mary Beth, Judy, and Maggie, y'all are awesome, and why DOS didn't invite you all, I don't know. But, but thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Bruce. I'm glad to know that someone cares about us now. Kidding. But I did want to just make a quick announcement that I am going, I am a part of the Teacher of the Year Selection Committee this year round, and I'm super excited. We just finished our round of reading the applications, and no spoiler alerts here. I can't give you any privy information about what's happening, but, and we turned those in March 1st, and the next part of the process is to go and visit all of the teachers and their classrooms. So really excited about it. It was extremely difficult to try to even rank, because all of the teachers have just so many individual and unique gifts. And there were some applications, I literally, like, teared up and were crying, but the overarching theme was just the care and the passion and the dedication. And it was also really enlightening to see some of the challenges and opportunities that they presented, that they face and they overcome, and that they work together with their other team members and staff to deal with. So it was, yeah, I'm super excited, and yeah, more to come on that.
Thank you. Just to piggyback on Maggie, because Maggie and I were both at the Santa Barbara County School Boards Association meeting, and she didn't get to talk more about that, but they're about the dinner, the annual dinner with, and all school board members of the county are invited to the dinner, and county board members, and Monique Limone will be the speaker. And the date is 5:30, it starts, and it's going to be at the Red Barn in San Inez. And I, I think it's a great opportunity for all of us to go to meet school board members, and especially with so many new ones coming in, and to introduce ourselves and network. I think that in being a person, a contact person, would be helpful. And last month, I missed the meeting, and I apologize, but I wanted to, this is my, it was my comment for last month. It was, I don't know if she already was recognized, but College Elementary School District, that's San Inez, that's in the San Inez Valley, Maureen Donner was awarded the Superintendent, Principal of the Year. Was that mentioned? Oh, you did, okay. And then for Region 13, by the Association of California School Administrators, they call that AXA. And this award is the highest honor in the state of California, and that region includes Santa Barbara County, San Luis, and Ventura. So her nomination is being forwarded for consideration of a state award, and I wanted to recognize her. And this, March 10th and 11th is the CCBE Governance Workshop, and I'll be attending that in Sacramento. And lastly, we had a Budget Committee meeting this week, and also the Employee Recognition Event. I just really appreciated that. That was so uplifting, and it's well, it was so well orchestrated, and I think it was so welcoming for all that, I think, to recognize those people. It was very inspiring. Thank you.
Excellent. Do we have any public comments today? None. Then we will move forward to our presentations, and I'll turn the announcement of that over to Susan, please.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, and it's so great to see all of you and be here with you. I know that our team is going to beam in a student on our, from our Student Advisory Council. As Mrs. Frost stated, Ada from San Inez will not be able to join us today. She had a conflict, Ada deguiado, but hopefully in the future. And today, we'll have Angel Paneda Santana join us. I think any moment now, he'll appear on the screen, so I can keep talking. Let's see how we can. Hi, Angel, good afternoon.
Hello.
Can you hear us? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, will you say something so we can check to see if we can hear you, to say hello?
Hello, hello.
Hello. I love it. Well, I'm so glad, we are all so glad that you're here. And I am looking at a screen of you, but I don't think I'm looking directly at you. But to me, I'm looking directly at you, and I know all of us are looking at screens, and we see you. And we have had the opportunity to talk in the past about the Student Advisory Council of whom you, one of the members is you. And Angel, Angel is a 10th grader in Carpinteria. The minute you speak with Angel is the minute you will never forget him. He's just phenomenal. Angel, you're such an incredible individual, engaging always, has wonderful contributions in our meetings, and I just wanted to welcome you to the county board meeting in Zoom and ask you a few questions, if you wouldn't mind, to share with the, with the county board.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm glad to see some of you, from my perspective, mostly.
There's a whole audience. There's 1,000 people, well, you can, no, there's an audience here who are delighted to meet you, too. And Angel, we know that Carpinteria District is, it goes from transitional kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. Can you share with us which schools you attended so far?
All right. Me, as a small kindergartner, I joined, or preschooler, I was in main school, and that's where I met a lot of people. But I also went to Santa Barbara. We were having some troubles moving, but I did end up staying in Carpinteria. And after main school, I went to Cannolino. I attended first grade. I didn't attend kindergarten. I attended kindergarten in Adelante Charter School in Santa Barbara. But from first grade to fifth grade, I stayed in Cannolino, Cannolino Elementary School. And from then on, I went to Carpinteria Middle School, here at Carpinteria, and I stayed there from sixth grade to eighth grade. That's when COVID impacted me personally. And then I went here now to Carpinteria High School, which I'm a 10th grader, so I've only experienced half of it, and I've had fun.
Wonderful. Thanks so much for sharing that history. And Angel, I'm wondering, how you heard about the Student Advisory Council, and what made you want to apply? What motivated you to apply?
I heard from this council, from my ASB advisor, Mr. Dolan, or Kevin Dolan. He was telling me that because I am a presenter for ASB at our monthly rallies that we have every once in a while, he said that I'd be the perfect fit for joining this Board. And I joined it because, I'm like, why not? What do I have going on at home that would not make me want to apply? And it turns, turns out that I am the only person from Carpinteria High School that applied, so lucky me.
Serendipity, lucky us, lucky us, that's for sure. That works out well. So Angel, in our Student Advisory Council meetings, we've talked about, we're asking a lot of input from the students, including, you know, what, what's going really, really well? What helps you stay engaged in our schools every day? But also, what might be some of the challenges, too? And before you go there, let's introduce Diana Rigby, Carpinteria of, excuse me, Superintendent of Carpinteria Unified. Thank you so much for being with us, Diana. Thank you, Mrs. Rigby. All right, we'll pass it back to you. Oh, and I think I have one more guest coming in. Let's see if we can introduce Mr. Cornejo, the principal of Carpinteria High School. And Angel, Mrs. Rigby and Mr. Cornejo are here to fully support you, and they're so proud of the work that you're doing. But in a moment, I'll pass it on to them to see if they'll say a word or two about Carpinteria and you. But Angel, let's talk about that, some of the great things that help you stay engaged, and some of the challenges you see, may not be yourself, but it may be with the youth that you're representing.
Okay. The way I stay motivated here at, or at least high school, for here, I stay motivated by having the influence of not only my friends, but my teachers and my advisors. My teachers are super helpful, and they provide me with anything that I need, and if I ever need help with them, there's always my seventh period that I have, and I could go to them, I ask for a task, I go to them with any help, if I need to redo a test, get help with the homework, I get help from them. And that's my motivation for going to school, because they're funny, they're, they're obviously smart, because they're teachers, but they're also very, very interactive. They pay equal, much attention to everybody in the classroom. And if you have more questions, or you're not exactly getting the material, those teachers will help you. And they pay full attention to you when they talk to you, and it's like if everybody else in the classroom was not even there. That, that's how I see it.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead. Were you going to address some of the challenges that you see or have experienced?
Yes, that is what I, the challenges, at least from my school, I don't really have much challenges. All I gotta do is, from my house, I gotta walk to school, then I gotta experience high school, so that's a challenge, high school.
You have 50 people nodding their heads in the room. They completely understand. So Angel, last question for me, and then see if there's any from the Board, and ask comments from Mr. Cornejo and Mrs. Rigby. But, you know, as a member of a countywide Student Advisory Council, we talk about amplifying the voice of students. Just what is it that you'd like for us, elected officials, community members, people who are really wanting to do, make a difference in schools? Is there anything that you, in particular, that you'd like us to know that I haven't already asked you today?
I believe that high school, it's, it's a big, it's a big thing and a big place. It's also a period in time, as me, a young adult, I begin to start to think about my future and what I want to be when I grow up. I don't have much idea yet. I'm only a sophomore, so I will begin to think of that later on, once I get to my senior year, or maybe even my junior year. But I think a problem that most people have right now is, a lot of people's mental health, I believe that the mental health issue is a big problem, not even with just high schoolers, I think middle schoolers, too. I think if we're able to get help with local, local therapy centers or our counselors, because at our school, we only have two counselors, and they help us, but I feel like, or three counselors, my bad, I feel like it may not be as helpful as other schools, which may have a lot more counselors. Our counselors are really helpful, really inspirational. They help our seniors a lot, and they help our juniors when they start getting to SATs and other, other big, big college stuff, because they are the people that you report to, and if you have any struggles, you talk to them. As a sophomore, I haven't experienced that yet, but with the comments that I get from my friends that are seniors and my friends that are juniors, they tell me that they're really helpful, but it's also very stressful once they start taking too many classes or too many hard classes. It's very, it's efficient, but for some, it may be inefficient. And it's, it totally depends on how or on who you talk to. As me, as a change that I would like to make for the county would be people's mental health and how they could deal with stress and anxiety. Many people may not even have that opportunity, because they're too scared to admit that they have stress and anxiety. I feel like it's very, very important that any student and any individual in general should know what it means to have stress and anxiety. That, that's my, what I'd like to change.
Angel, thank you so much for sharing that. We've got a round of applause from the group. It says so much about what we hear or read about, but when we hear directly from a student like you, I'll tell you, it really does resonate a lot. It makes a huge impact. And what you have to share, Angel, is so, so valuable, important, valued from all of us, we just so appreciate it. I'm going to turn to my right and see if there's any questions from the county board of you, maybe one or two, if there are any, and I'll see if there's a final word from Mrs. Rigby and Mr. Cornejo before we close this part of the agenda. So let me see if there's any questions. Mary Beth Cardy from Carpinteria.
Hi there. Hi, Diana. Hi, Gerardo. Angel, it is a pleasure to see you up there. I am so glad that you took advantage of this opportunity that was extended to you through your ASB counselor. I know that Carpinteria High School is considered a small school. It's also a beautiful campus nestled in the foothills, lots of advantages to being a part of a small school. Are you making your way through some of the enrichment and after-school activities that are offered to you? Do you find places that you'd like to join? And are, do you feel welcomed and invited to clubs, et cetera, on campus to help you feel more connected?
Oh, yeah, definitely, definitely. Our school offers ag classes, which also put you in the FFA department, which is very helpful for me, because that is starting to pick my interest. And as a leader in my ASB classroom, I also am taking leadership conferences with my FFA advisor. My advisor is very helpful. And for FFA, it's a club, too, kinda, it's kind of a mandatory class-type thing. If you do end up in an ag class, you have to go to the meetings, which are, they aren't boring, they're really fun, they're run by students as much as by the advisor. They're very helpful, they've, FFA has been teaching me new things about agriculture, animal sciences, and just science in general. It's, it's very animal sciences and just science in general. It's, it's very helpful. The two FFA advisors that we have that are also teachers here at the school are very helpful. They're very nice. And they really help me with any problems that I have, science-based or mechanical-based. Other clubs that we have here are Recycling Club, very nice people. They keep our campus clean. They also, if you put any bottles into recycling, they go recycle them after school, I believe. We got many other clubs. We got the GSA Club, which helps people who are trans, gay and bisexual here at the school. They help them with any problems that they have, which is very helpful, very helpful for those students. We have our Film Club here, which is full of very nice people who know anything film-wise. If you have any questions about film or if you'd like to go after school and just watch a movie and talk about it and what it is, you could go with them and be with them. They are very nice, very informed people. I'm not so sure about other clubs because those are the clubs I mainly know about and I am mainly in. But those clubs are very helpful. They're very welcoming. They're very, very nice.
Thank you, Angel. I'd like to pass it on to Mr. Cornejo and Mrs. Rigby if you have anything you'd like to add or say in appreciation of Angel or anything about your school or district. You've got the last word.
Well, I think all of us at Carpenter High School are very proud of Angel. He is one, he's what we look for in a leader. He is active in avid and FFA and cross-country and soccer and ASB. So he's very active. And I know he also runs a business with his parents after school. And ASB students really look up to him for advice, especially on quitting venues. But I think Angel will be very successful in whatever he chooses to do after high school. And we're very proud of having him and the opportunity that he gives us every day to learn from him and to get to know him. So that he remembers us when he becomes rich and famous and he can come back to Carpenter High School and provide us with huge donations. But I'm sure that Angel and his family should be very proud, just like we are of him. So congratulations, Angel.
Thank you, Mr. Cornejo, for being here and for your leadership of Carpenter High School as well. And Mrs. Rigby.
Yes, thank you. Nice to see everyone. And I echo the same pride that we have for Angel. And we think he's a wonderful representative of Carpenter High School on your advisory council. And one thing we know about Angel that you've learned about is this is a young man that takes advantage of all the opportunities that we can offer at the high school. And we're very excited that he's a part of our community. And he is a true leader amongst his peers. So you cannot have any better student on that council. We're just so proud of him.
Wonderful. Well, Team Carpinteria, thank you so much for joining us by Zoom today. Really appreciate that you stopped what you were doing to be with us. And Angel, we are just so grateful that you were contributing to our meeting today. And we'll see you soon for our final Student Advisory Council meeting online. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to item number nine, presentation on universal pre-kindergarten. UPK is helping us to look at ways that we can support the local districts. And one of the things that we are doing along that line is to collaborate the work between early care and education and the curriculum and instruction division. So that we can really support the districts in their work. And now I would like to have our Janelle and Christian and Christina.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that wonderful introduction. That is very helpful because now I don't have to introduce our team. So we are here today to really talk about how our two departments are working collaboratively to support the implementation of UPK. And first of all, we wanted to kind of review what UPK is. And it is a mixed delivery system that is focusing on how to support three and four-year-olds throughout the county in a variety of different ways. The way that they're trying to explain this, and I love this visual, is it's really a bridge. It's a bridge between early care and education and the TK through 12 system. Now with this, what they want to see is that all children have better ability and access to be ready for school and have the school readiness so that they can do better with college and career readiness in the future. With this, it is parent choice. And being a mixed delivery system, it really shows that there are many different options. So some that they like to really focus on is the fact that you have TK. You have CSPP, which is the state preschools. You have Head Start, which you guys know as Communify. Then we have private options and that can be family childcare. That can be the parent taking care of the child at home. And some of those options can be funded by things like our alternative payment program. So those are some of the options that the parents have and it is parents' choice. One thing that's important to also realize about these options is the intent of UPK is that they were really thinking that many parents might start to choose to send more of their four-year-olds to transitional kindergarten because there's longer days, more opportunities with expanded learning. And then those CSPP, the state programs, the private programs can serve more three-year-olds. Because the research shows that we don't have enough spots for those young three-year-olds. And therefore you give more educational opportunities to more young children. So now we're going to have Christina come into, oh, sorry. And then SBCO supports that we are currently providing is we obviously have our own ECE centers that we provide. We provide educational supports for teachers and what we call our providers throughout Santa Barbara County. And then we are supporting LEAs with the TK implementation.
Great, thank you. So as we continue to ensure that our collective efforts are aligned to our countywide vision, we are utilizing the UPK planning and implementation focus areas to align our work. And so I'm just going to briefly mention the five focus areas. The first one is the vision, clarity and coherence, the partnerships, community and engagement, workforce recruitment and professional learning, curriculum and instruction and facilities. So here you see this visual of the alignment of these new and existing initiatives that have been driving our UPK work. And it's important to highlight that some of these initiatives existed. And then some of these initiatives are also new and exciting as we, as we move forward through this through line within our work. And the next components of our presentation will highlight these five focus areas. And then we'll also give brief information related to the new initiatives or the existing initiatives. So first we begin with vision and coherence. And in vision and coherence, this requires the collaboration and the partnership with our county office and providers while we build those essential and critical initiatives with the work and the vision. So we assisted our local educational agencies with the implementation and the planning, with, especially with the requirements of the new legislation and policy. We also supported our LEAs by the development and implementation of their UPK plans. Other set conditions such as the initial UPK survey and the end of the year program report are also some tasks that are at hand. We also compiled the information on the initial UPK survey and we did an analysis of this survey. We took a look at what were some of the trends throughout this, this information. And we developed what is a technical assistance needs. This infographic on the left, as you can see, outlined by our five focus areas, were able to give us those trends, the top three technical assistance areas in which our, our districts need additional support. So this is going to serve as a guide for the work that we do, especially with those specific supports and conversations that we are having within our districts and providers.
Okay, so to assist both the county superintendents and CDE with the rollout of UPK, there are multiple work groups that have been created to help bring new ideas from across the state. Both Janelle and I currently serve on two of these task forces. Janelle serves on the UPK Task Force, which has the goal to provide recommendations on the requirements for county offices to support UPK implementation. And for myself, I am one of 30 applicants that were chosen out of 300 to serve on the UPK Quality and Access Work Group. And I was chosen based upon my experience within the ECE field and my current role within the county. And the goals of that work group, you can see on those bullets, are to provide recommendations on best practices for increasing access to high-quality universal preschool, provide recommendations to update preschool standards and to ensure that those recommendations are in alignment with the current master plan for early learning and care. And the overall goal of this work is to provide continued quality improvement for all three and four-year-olds and to promote the state to provide more implementation funding. So now we'll move on to community engagement. SBCO works hard to engage with our community members and provide resources to all that work within the education field. And one of the ways we do that is through Childcare Planning Council. So at SBCO, I currently serve as the Childcare Planning Council Coordinator. This council is required by Welfare and Institution Code. And CCPC members are appointed by the Board of Supervisors and the County Superintendent of Schools. The main goals of CCPC are to facilitate community collaboration, act as a forum to share knowledge and resources, promote professional development and serve as a voice to promote communication between local and state government and child advocacy groups. Currently Christina has been integrated into CCPC. So now we are able to collaborate to provide information about UPK from both the ECE and TK 12 side to all of our members. And as you can see within that yellow box, those are some of our current initiatives that CCPC provides. Those are supports that come through professional development for administrators and leaders, workforce development retention efforts, stipends for education and professional development, facilities expansion support through our facilities committee, community partnership and continued advocacy locally and at a state level. We also have multiple collaborative networks that bring together our ECE leaders. One of those being our Directors Collaborative, which brings together about 120 directors from state preschools, private preschools, Head Start and all of the other various forms of care. It is a place that we are able to bring in guest speakers such as licensing, public health. We've had Susan Salcedo present. And it's really a support network and brings together everyone to make sure that everyone's following policies and procedures and feels as though they have access to all of SBCO's resources. We also, when UPK was beginning its rollout, ECE and CNI worked together to present a UPK network meetings. And what those were, was just the beginning of bringing together our ECE and our TK 12 leaders to begin to talk about what UPK might look like within the county, to provide resources and to just promote cross-collaboration. This work will continue with Christina through our UPK Community of Practice. And what that is, is a meeting that will follow those five categories that we saw from the UPK implementation plans. And it will bring together district leaders, administrators and community-based leaders, allow them to build relationships and share implementation successes and progress. One of the ways that we are also able to support the rollout of UPK is through parent education. Currently, we are able to provide families with information through our
ECE-specific professional development. We also have opportunities to bring together preschool teachers, TK teachers, kindergarten teachers, paraprofessionals and community partners. And one example of this community building took place just yesterday where we had about 55 UPK teachers in attendance as they were immersed in this notion of playful transformation. And this was supported by our Early Education Teacher Development Grant. And so our Early Education Teacher Development Grant, our county will receive $1.2 million to fund our workforce recruitment. And we have facilitated partnerships with local institutes of higher education to be able to create these pathways to ensure that our current and also our prospective PK and TK teachers receive the certification that they need. And so this grant offers the reimbursement for tuition fees and also books and materials. And so the next focus area that we will be discussing is curriculum and instruction. And so what we know with curriculum and instruction is that this is a pivotal role in providing that vision, the leadership and the support to our providers in order to create these innovative ways to deliver instruction in both developmentally and age-appropriate. And so here we have this visual illustration of the alignment between our current TK 12 standards to our California Preschool Learning Foundations and also the Infant Toddler Learning Development Foundations. It is important to call out this requirement in the alignment that is currently rooted in the already aligned system within the California standards, but the work needs to begin in the California Preschool Learning Foundation. So if you see here, that alignment is what is guiding, is a guiding principle for our integration of developmentally appropriate curricula. And as previously mentioned, when collaboration between the experts in the room, which are our UPK teachers, takes place, great things happen. So we do want to build this forum, this platform where teachers can come together to discuss best practices, research, resources and new learning. So the UPK Teachers Collaborative will be initiated this month in a virtual platform. And we're really excited about the outcomes and the impact that this is going to have.
Okay, as UPK continues to roll out, we will need to continue to support facilities and their quality improvement as they shift their operations from supporting just five and up to four through 12. And one of the ways that the state is promoting continued quality improvement is through the mixed delivery grant. Christina's work has already started with her, her UPK grant. And this mixed delivery grant is an additional grant to support her work. So the intent of the mixed delivery grant is to promote cross-collaboration between ECE and TK 12 through a coordinated planning effort that brings together parties from all sides of education. that brings together parties from all sides of education. And some of these groups will include LEAs, First Five, Head Start, preschool centers, and family childcare, as well as higher ed. And together, we will work to plan for UPK options in a mixed-delivery system aligned with Title V standards, will plan for increasing inclusion, and we will plan for workforce development. One of the intents of this grant is also to help us address emerging needs that we are seeing as UPK continues to roll out. At this point, the two major needs that we have been tasked with addressing are facilities shortage as well as staffing shortages. And now I will pass it back to Janelle.
So to help support these, one other meeting that we have is our provider meetings, which really focus on the contractors who work with the state for CSPP. So our state, like lots of them are districts, but sometimes it's also like Isla Vista Youth Project and others who have CSPP contracts. When we're having the problems with staffing, you guys saw our one-pager that we created a little while ago about the staffing issues. That's something that was started through this workgroup and LPC. Another big project that we're working on right now is that one of our, one of our districts, one of our very huge districts, is actually going to have to release their CSPP contract because they do not have the facilities to support CSPP as well as TK. So we are working, as local planning council and as the county, we are working with the state to look at how we can keep those funds in our county to serve kids and how to redistribute those funds appropriately to support the children. And that is all work that we are doing collaboratively because it takes all of us to do that well. So we credit this visual just to kind of give you an idea of what are some of the work that's purely on the ECE side, purely on CNI, and what work are we doing together specifically around UPK? And really, what, what we are seeing more and more is that we cannot do this in a silo. And obviously, that is what the state is saying as well as they're funding us in different ways. And it is pushing us closer and closer as a county office and also in our departments. So the overall view of this is that this is a huge shift for our districts. It's a huge shift for the providers that are working with the young children. And this is going to take time. And it has a lot of challenges with all these different components that have to work together. And as a county office, we are here to support any of those needs that our districts and our providers have. So thank you very much for letting us present today. And if you have any questions?
Are you at liberty to share which district is?
Yes, so Santa Maria Bonita has announced that they have to give up their $2.7 million contract. And again, as a county office, we're working, we have a providers' meeting actually again on next Tuesday because we have been informed by another district that their TK projections are way higher than they expected. And they might also have to reduce a CSPP classroom as well. So we're, we are in the process of gathering that information, talking about options and ideas for solutions, and just trying to really get creative. Because again, the intent of this was, as the four-year-olds shift up, then we have the CSPP to support more three-year-olds. But the districts, if they don't have space and they are required to serve TK, they have to make some very difficult decisions.
Thank you for sharing that.
So the state's dumping in a lot of money to get this started and everything. But sooner or later, the state gets distracted by some other shiny object, and we're all left in sustainment mode to make this work. So I assume this is going to generate ADA for schools.
For TK.
But basic aid school districts will not. Are we going to break any basic aid school districts with this shift? And I don't just ask you, I ask staff as well.
So I know that that was a concern for many of the school districts. And I know that those are things that they are looking at and looking at options to support. It is a requirement that they have. So I don't know that information right now. I'm sure we can gather more data to see, you know, who is having concerns and who might need different support in different ways. But I do know that it is a requirement. And everyone's trying to figure out how to make it work the best way that they can for their community and their children.
Thank you for that. So, so that's the grace part, I guess, of what this is all about. Special needs kids. So SBCEO services a lot of those kids directly now. Now they're going to shift to the districts. What does that mean for SBCEO providers of all types?
So I do not want to talk for Kirsten. Would you like to come out and talk about special ed and what that might be looking like?
Excellent question and very timely. Thank you. So as districts transition to serving students who are four in TK, that means that they no longer would be served in our preschool programs. The responsibility then becomes that on the district. So we would continue to serve on behalf of districts the children whose parents elect, the four-year-olds whose parents elect to have them stay in preschool programs, or those children who are not age-eligible yet to transition to TK.
Big slips this month for some of our staff?
So not right now. We're not in a position right now where we're seeing a huge decline in our enrollment for that age group. This next year will be a big transitional, no pun intended, transitional year for all of us because we have two things happening. We have an increase in the number of students who are being referred for assessments for special ed, who are, who are being found eligible at that age group, and also students possibly transitioning on to be served in TK as well. So we're planning for what we know now in terms of the, the students' needs. And then really, in the fall, we will find out how many students have transitioned on or how many have made the final decision to stay with us.
And one more question. So the, the shift is coming out of a lot of community-based preschool programs, whether it's from churches, SBCEO, I mean, you name it, a lot of organizations. So how many of those do we break? Because all of their enlistment is going to go down, pardon my term for that, that their folks are going to go down. And they will have to leave service as well because they can no longer afford to do that. So strategically, what does that mean for the communities in our county?
So at this time, we are not seeing that because there is still such a large need for spaces that that is not occurring. But that is something that we are keeping our eye on. So right now, especially in the south part of our county, we have people who qualify for the alternative payment program. So we will pay for their childcare. They cannot find a spot. So again, that is a possibility, but that is not what we're currently seeing. What we are worried about is the CSPP contractors. So as TK has had time to kind of slowly shift, and there's funding behind that. For CSPP, we're not having the same outline and that time to shift. In CSPP, you have to earn your contract. So if all of a sudden I have less kids to serve and we haven't gotten that information out to the parents about the different options, and now it's easier to qualify for these programs because that's the information we're trying to get out, then the CSPP contractors are not only at risk of not having spaces, but also at risk of not earning their contract and then having to close their doors because they can't sustain themselves. So those are things that we're working on, well, we're all working on as a group to get this information out to help support all of these different things. And these are things that, in the workgroups, are being discussed and brought in, brought to different levels so that the state is aware of it and that the legislators are aware of what's happening and the concerns.
Good. So no more questions. But I will say, it's great to see that we have a lot of people at the ground level working to make this happen really well. But there's a place for this for our board as well, Susan. So when it comes time to think about budgeting and all those, those other kind of things, please help us think through that as well so we can help provide support and the appropriate structures to make all this happen successfully.
Thank you.
Michelle has a question.
I have a comment and a question. Thank you for your presentation. It is so nice. We are looking at this from just on the budget in Tuesday. And we're looking at it at a 30,000-foot level. So it's so nice to see the faces and the plan. And it's very detailed. And I appreciate your time that you put into this presentation for us to understand it. The second, the question I have is about outreach. So if you have a first-time parent starting out, and now there's been so many changes, say, or maybe you were, there was a big interruption between having children and now there, there are programs to serve three-year-olds. Where, where, if someone was, a parent was to come to me and ask me, where, where do I begin to navigate? Where, where do we direct a parent?
So there is a website that the state is building with, I can't remember what the other group is, to give parent information. It is not fully developed. The flyers, handouts, all those things aren't created yet, but it is coming shortly, as well as radio advertisements, both English and Spanish, that they are going to be doing statewide. At this point, I know really, anybody who comes into ECE and asks questions, we have trained our staff about those options, like our alternative payment program. We're often, we're serving those kids from, you know, zero on. So when it becomes time where the kids are turning four, we send out information to the families that are in those programs to let them know, like, here, there's options. When the school districts are starting enrollment, we send that out to let them know. So that's one of the ways. But it is, right now, that's one of the areas that people are still struggling to get that information out clearly to families because it is very confusing.
And my concern, and I, and this is an area that you address, is that the local districts are able to respond to those parents when they call and ask the questions and that they have the best information available and that they're willing to say, "We don't know yet", when we don't know yet. Because this is, yeah.
We're really all working to build this new system collaboratively. And we're pushing together two sectors that have not talked as much as we would have liked them to in the past.
Well, without consideration for the CSPP element in it. And that's, given the state of preschool availability in this area, it's very concerning, very concerning indeed, yeah. All right, any other questions, comments? Excellent job. Thank you, team. Thank you. All right, and, deep breath. Staffing was kind of high on the list of things that showed up on that presentation. And so we're going to have Mari Baptista come forward and talk about our human relations work. And also Amy Ramos. And they're going to present on the State of Education Workforce in Santa Barbara County. I just want to take a minute to give kudos to the Human Resource Department and personnel for the very hard work that they have had to do under very challenging situations. So it is appreciated and it is noted that this is not easy right now. No simple solutions.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Good afternoon. Amy and I are honored to be here to share some information with you regarding the state of the workforce in education and in other sectors with whom we compete for employees. I'm sure you've all read many, many media articles about staffing shortage throughout California, across the nation, et cetera. Today, we want to share with you primarily SBCEO data on recruitment and retention. And we will also share some data we were able to gather in terms of county-wide educational workforce information. Feel free, please, to interrupt, ask questions anytime you would like. Just alert us somehow and we'll figure it out. We'll also leave some time at the end, of course. This first slide represents data on recruitment for our certificated positions, or in other words, those jobs that require the applicant to hold a credential from the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing, permitting them to work in specialized assignments. The data in this graphic excludes certificated management positions. The graphic reflects the reality of the challenges that we're faced with in positions that directly serve students, such as classroom teachers and credentialed specialists, including school nurses, speech and language pathologists. The data does not include school psychologists who are currently classified as certificated managers. So we just want to note that. On the left-hand bar graph, everybody's looking in a different location here, you will see a 21% increase in the number of certificated vacancies compared to the last fiscal year. And on the right side are the total number of applications received each year, starting with 1819, ending in 2122. I want to highlight that the 2021, represented in the dark blue, is the first year that reflects a full pandemic year. So not surprisingly, you see where it's at. While we were already beginning to see a downward trend, that was hugely exacerbated by the pandemic. In the data you see here, there is a 102% increase in certificated applications since the 2021 fiscal year, illustrating on average about three applications per vacancy. That's similar to what we saw pre-pandemic. Some of the few applicants that we receive, or applications that we receive, are applicants who may not actually be qualified for the position. And an even smaller percentage of those applicants complete the entire recruitment process. Applicants drop out for a number of reasons, including concerns about the long commute, cost of living, salary, and competing job offers. It is particularly challenging to retain applicants for some of our lower-paid teaching positions. Early care and education teachers and preschool programs are some of those represented here today. Another recruiting challenge is that some positions require credentials held by much smaller pools of applicants, including speech and language pathologists, school nurses, special education teachers, school psychologists, and early care and education preschool teachers, which covers the gamut of most of what we serve. Part of the challenge is a supply issue. There are not very many people in the state earning those particular credentials required for those positions, which means all of the local education agencies are competing for the small and diminishing pool of people. One other example with speech and language supports, this, we're just going to get a little more specific with them. For the most part, we've had vacancies unfilled for many years. At this point in time today, we have 18 total vacant certificated positions. So that's all of our certificated positions, eight of which are speech and language pathologists. As a result, to the extent available, we contract with non-public staffing agencies when we're unable to hire people directly. Even with the seven non-public agency contractors that we have, we still have one speech position fully unfilled. Two of those NPA contractors are preparing to leave March 3rd tomorrow. And two more of those NPA contractors are only able to work remotely with students, which is obviously not ideal or aligned with student needs and services.
Moving on to classified recruitment, I want to note that SBCEO operates a merit system for its classified workforce. And a merit system involves very structured recruitment process. And recruiting typically involves a multiple-step examination process. As you're aware, from having held public hearings and made appointments, our merit system is overseen by our Personnel Commission, the members of which are Mike Ostini, Gary Pickavet, and Carmen Hadamio. As we move on to review the numbers, please keep in mind that a single position announcement or job posting may be for a classification with multiple positions that we're trying to fill. So the number of actual vacancies throughout the year is higher than the number of classified recruitment figures that are shown here in the chart on the left. Overall, we had a 35% increase in classified recruitments year over year in the 2122 fiscal year. And the number of classified recruitments that we conducted has more than doubled since the 1819 fiscal year. The circled number in the last column indicates that only 185 of the 1,018 classified applications received in 2122. received in 2122, or 18%, resulted in candidates eligible for hire. This means that they completed our recruitment process to the end and demonstrated their qualifications through the exam process. So as of today, we have 19 unfilled paraeducator positions. And paraeducators provide instructional support in special education classrooms. And we are struggling to get enough applications. At the start of this fiscal year, 2223, the number of vacancies was at nine, and it has continued to rise in spite of the extensive and creative support of our classified recruitment staff. Thank you for the acknowledgement, Mrs. Frost. And indeed, despite the fact that we have actually been hiring people. For quite some time, we've recruited for paraeducators and childcare assistants, who are classified staff in early care and education, on an open, continuous basis, due to the high number of vacancies. And what this means is that we advertise for those jobs and accept applications year-round. We never close those recruitments. Another symptom of our recruiting challenges is that, over the past few years, there's been a need to advertise for other classifications continuously as well. And many of those classifications for which we have to recruit on an open, continuous basis require a special certification or license that is not a credential. So some examples of these jobs that provide specialized services are grail transcriber, school occupational therapist, and sign language interpreter.
This year, we held, as you know, two countywide job fairs with several goals, including supporting district and SBCEO recruitment, providing the community with access to participating higher education program information, informing the community on credentialing pathways for certificated positions, boosting the number of potential classified applicants, educating the community on childcare financial supports available through our early care and education alternative payment program, and sharing information regarding countywide childcare programs. Thirteen of our local school districts, one charter, one private, and five colleges and universities registered to participate in the job fairs. While our job fairs held just this last month were successful in terms of preparation and surpassed the challenges of weather and viruses, the total number of attendees was significantly lower than in years past, with only 30 individuals at the South Santa Barbara Job Fair and 34 in the North Santa Maria Job Fair, for a total of 64 participants. About one quarter of the number of attendees in 2020, and only a fifth of the number of attendees in 2021. Excuse me, 2019, thank you. Yes, this is true. This first chart displays the population of attendees this year. 49% of those 64 expressed interest in certificated positions, 36% in classified positions, and 15% in substitute positions.
Given our staffing challenges, we did expect fewer participants this year. And as part of our efforts to draw people in, we significantly augmented our marketing. We worked closely with Director of Communications Kami Barnwell and her team, who put together an outstanding media plan, including a landing webpage, a widely distributed media release, social media postings, printable flyers in English and Spanish, and prerecorded radio public service announcements in English and Spanish. Superintendent Salsedo included an announcement in her monthly newsletter. And we also asked our own employees to market the event to friends and family through our Keeping in Touch newsletter and an all-staff email. We also distributed a media kit to participating school districts to help them market the event. It included social media graphics, a printable flyer, links to internet events pages, a ready-made Parent Square message, and a draft email to send to their own employees. Lastly, we asked community colleges and universities to market the job fairs to their student populations through their career centers and related academic programs, such as early childhood education. So this second chart, the pie chart, shows how attendees learned about the job fair. And ultimately, what the data showed was that the most effective marketing efforts were those that cost us nothing and were sent by a trusted source. So for example, 27% that big green slice of the pie learned about the fairs from their college or university, 11% from a school district, the gray slice, 17% from social media postings, in blue, and 23%, almost a quarter, from a friend, a school employee, the superintendent's newsletter, or just other general word of mouth. We want to acknowledge that the data was from a small sample size, but we believe it's representative. And so based on the data, our marketing efforts in future years will be focused on using the no-cost marketing channels.
So we suspect that the reason we had so few attendees was due to a number of different variables. We continue to find ourselves in a highly competitive labor market. According to the EDD, the unemployment rate in Santa Barbara County for November of 2021 was 3.9%. Went down from 5.7% in November of 2020. And in December of 2022, just recently, the rate went down further to 3.1%. At our last Countywide Human Resources Network meeting, we discussed all of the additional challenges of recruitment and retention, which is an ongoing conversation. And those included reluctance to attend an in-person event, the reality of the cost of living in our county, the unavailability of housing, childcare issues, salaries that may not be competitive enough, and a newer expectation for remote work that may not be feasible in the educational settings. All of these variables, coupled with the lack of people qualified for educational positions, and a lack of people interested in going into the field of education, results in that perfect storm. In spite of the low attendance, we're trying to put some positive things in here, at our job fairs this year, a positive outcome to those events was that, for the first time in three years, we all got to network with each other in person. So all the school districts, the higher education institutions, and the other professionals who joined us as well. That was wonderful. And we had cookies from solving. While we didn't see the number of attendees that we would have liked, we did have the opportunity to promote the field of education to those diverse and clearly committed participants who did attend. And we'll share a little bit more in a later slide about this concept that we're working through, a long-term strategy for elevating the field of education as well.
The chart on this slide represents the number of new hires into classified and certificated jobs, including management positions, over the past four years. The number in red that you see above the column for 2122 shows an estimate of the total number of vacancies, both classified...
Pause. Your handouts actually have the wrong number on it. It's 161, just so you know.
So that, yes, that number shows an estimate of the total number of vacancies, both classified and certificated, in that year. And you'll see that we were able to fill only about 48% of our vacancies. And given our continued challenges in attracting qualified candidates, we anticipate that this discrepancy between vacancies and number of new hires will continue.
This data shows resignations and retirements for both certificated and classified employees. It excludes other separations data, such as leave exhaustion, non-relex dismissals, and layoffs. We really wanted to just focus on voluntary separations. Resignations can be attributed to the strong labor market, again. People can easily find desirable jobs with other employers. But we also see resignations for other reasons. Health issues, childcare issues, primarily being those. In the bar graph on the left, you will see that we experienced a 30% increase in resignations from the 2021 to the 2122 fiscal year. 38, I don't have my glasses on, thank you. In addition, when you calculate the total of these separations over those four years, you can see that SBCEO has experienced a 42% turnover in staff. We have an estimated 480 regular employees at this time. Our expectation, yes, yes. That's a big one, I know. Because that's a lot of history that... That is a great, unanswerable question. It's a great question, yeah. What we do find are the people that are here have been here for a very long time, many of them. And you saw that at the Service Awards. So a lot of those individuals end up sharing history that's verbal, that hasn't, either wasn't documented at some point, or just is anecdotal information. And that can be very helpful. But you're right, that has changed dramatically.
I've found, in my career, that institutional history is priceless. And so when you're facing, and not that we can do anything about it, but that's why this just hit me really hard.
About any information about mental health within this? It seems to be the common thread, even Angel, he mentioned that. And given, you know, the great aspect of being in the field, and then also the challenges and everything that comes along with it, can you speak to that aspect?
We do address that in a few slides here as well, with some anecdotal information from school districts. And to be honest, that is probably one of the primary conversations we're having in all of our professional networks, about the mental health and those impacts on staff, and also on everyone else, you know, on administrators, on the students, everybody, and how that has changed the environment, and how it also creates another challenge to promote the environment and bring people in. So it's definitely an issue. One of the things that we are doing here for our staff, we have a number of value-added benefits that include online supports for, pretty accessible online supports, for counseling, coaches, different things that can be helpful. So we are trying to increase our marketing. And our benefits manager is also beginning to develop a listserv for all those CISC members, which are all but one of the school districts in our county, who also have those value-added benefits. So she can simply say, hey, here's a media kit you can share with all your employees about Hinge Health, or whatever the program is that we're promoting at that time.
But you purposely didn't talk about school psychologists because they're management. But from what Angel said, school psychology, we all know how important they are. How are they doing in terms of numbers?
It's the same, there's the same challenges. I'm looking at Kirsten, because she works with our school psychologists. But they definitely have, it is harder to fill those positions. There's a wide variety of mental health supports out there. Everything from a school psychologist, who has a particular type of credential and is able to do assessments, diagnosis, as well as counseling and those things. There are also behavior specialists. There are mental health counselors. There are career counselors, which you hear more often in the high school settings, about a counselor who has the same credential as a school psychologist, but it's a different emphasis. So they all have different expertise areas. We definitely need more. Yeah. So our expectation, of course, is that these challenges will continue and potentially worsen with time, that we've been talking about here. The data in our county is mirrored statewide. For example, a recently published survey of 4,632 teachers in California found that one in five teachers say they will likely leave the profession by 2025. Top cited reasons were burnout from stress, political attacks on teachers, heavy workload, staff shortages, low salary, lack of respect from parents, and lack of work-life balance. 68% of teachers described their jobs as exhausting, while only 34% described their jobs as rewarding. So these are, I think, this is a subpopulation we're talking about, who completed this survey. But I think these are important words to take to heart for all of us to really think about.
Thinking of the inflow at the college level and postgraduate, and what we hope would be wonderful, a surge, or at least maintaining the level of interest of students going into the field. Do they, is that as bleak as everything else? Do you have any insight on that?
Going into the...
Picking education is a career.
It's a problem. I think one of the things we've been talking at our statewide network about are just anecdotally, what do your kids say? You come from a long line of educators. And how do they respond when you say, why aren't you going into education? And I can say, for my own children, the response was, why would I do that? I would have to deal with all those behaviors. And that's, you know, hard to hear as an educator who came from a long line of educators. Because to me, that's the reason you go into the field, is to support children. My kids are great, don't get me wrong. But that's oftentimes what you hear, are the challenges that they see. I think some of that can be attributed to media and what we see in classrooms happening, the fearful things that maybe are being highlighted. I'm assuming that a lot of those are factors as well. Do you want to add to that at all?
On the, well, on the certificated side, which is not really my thing, but just some of what I've been reading recently also refers to some of the barriers that people face. You know, having to put in their student, student teaching hours, which is essentially unpaid. And, you know, not many people can afford to do that. So they need family support. So that has negative impacts on traditionally underrepresented communities. So, you know, that's an equity issue. So there are all kinds of factors to consider. Moving on to employee leaves. On this slide, you see data representing the current number of employees on extended leaves, which we're defining as absences longer than five days. Of course, leaves are to be expected as employees go through the stages of life. In light of the information we've been sharing with you, what is especially challenging about employee leaves right now is that they exacerbate our current staffing shortage, especially because our recruiting challenges extend to our substitute pool, as we'll discuss on the next slide. While each chart represents a single point in time over, in two consecutive years, these snapshots are representative of the typical number of employees on extended leave at any given time. So this shows, for this year, as of February 26, that we had 17 employees out on extended leaves. And at any given time, we can expect approximately 15 to 23 employees to be out on extended leave, or approximately 3% to 5% of our workforce. So just as a reminder, this data does not include short-term absences of fewer than five days. So what this means is, on a daily basis, our program administrators are faced with the challenge of covering classrooms where there are vacancies, employees on extended leaves, and employees out on short-term absences for illness and other needs. And it's not uncommon for our program administrators to have to step into the role of a teacher for a day, or to ask a credentialed support provider to be the teacher on record for the day. So we can expect the need for leave coverage to continue to increase over time, given recent legislative efforts. For example, effective January 1 of this year, Assembly Bill 1041 went into effect, which provides employees the right to take California Family Rights Act leave. And that is the state equivalent of the Federal Family Medical Leave Act. So it enables employees to take California Family Rights Act leave to care for a designated... So, it enables employees to take California Family Rights Act leave to care for a designated person, as opposed to only specific relatives, as defined by the law. So, in other words, the ongoing enhancement of employee leave rights, which are important for a balanced life, result in additional absences that need to be covered. So, substitutes. SBCEO has experienced a steady decrease in available subs for both classified and certificated positions. We are definitely not alone in this trend. The shortage is occurring statewide and nationwide in the field of education. The need for subs during the early days of the pandemic declined, but we also had attrition. Many substitutes chose not to stay active. And then with the return of in-person learning, the shortage of reliable, well-qualified subs for both classified and certificated assignments became only more dire. So, to address this need, we have developed a few strategies. For example, during our annual review of substitute pay rates, HR conferred with our divisions that make greatest use of substitutes, and we approved increases to the pay rates for both certificated and classified subs. We developed incentives for substitutes to accept assignments with us, and for classified substitutes to also become certificated substitutes, they qualify, and this increases the assignments available to them and expands our sub pool. And with major support from the communications team and participation from several departments, HR produced a video highlighting substitute work that we use in our substitute recruitment efforts as well.
So, we're going to move now a little bit to more of that countywide aspect of these challenges. Each year in late May, SBCEO collects data from all of the school districts in Santa Barbara County on certificated substitutes, including total numbers of subs, pay rates, and special pay rates. You can see in this graph that there was a consistent and steep downward trend of the total number of certificated substitutes, starting in 2018, and with an exceptionally large decrease in 2021, and then a small bump back up in 2122. Overall, countywide, we have experienced a 41% decrease in certificated substitutes since 2018. Many districts have, like we did, increased their substitute pay annually. Countywide, on average, in the 2122 fiscal year, a substitute teacher made a daily minimum of $162 per day, and a maximum of $199 per day. That was an estimated $27 increase from the year prior, in one day. Statewide, according to a review of California Commission on Teacher Credentialing data, as you can see in the red in the center there, the, from 2018 to 2021, CTC renewed 25% fewer substitute permits. 19% of that decrease occurred during 2020. Statewide data on permits issued is consistent with our experience countywide. It is also too important to note that while the number of certificated substitutes may have slightly increased during 2122, districts continue to experience extreme difficulty backfilling vacant positions with substitutes. Even with the higher numbers, whether those subs are willing to accept those assignments on a day-to-day basis is a completely separate variable. One school district representative shared that she feels like when she calls a student, she is plea, a substitute, not a student, substitute, she is pleading for them to accept the job, and when they do, she feels like they have done her a favor. It goes without saying that while this data reflects certificated substitute shortage, districts countywide are experiencing the exact same issue with classified substitutes as well. This slide includes anecdotal statements from local school districts in Santa Barbara County regarding the challenges they've been experiencing with recruitment and the staffing shortage. In general, there's a clear emphasis on extreme challenges with substitutes, recognition that the cost of living is a significant barrier to recruitment in our county, and that a significant number of positions remain unfilled. Earlier, we referenced that CTC survey that went out to teachers in California, in which it states that California is one of the least affordable states exacerbated by escalating housing costs. Large majorities of the teachers surveyed said they were experiencing financial stress, indicating it is difficult to find affordable housing near where they teach, save for long-term goals, keep up with basic expenses, save for retirement, and to live comfortably and maintain the lifestyle they want. So, on this slide, I want to point out a couple of quick spots. One is that reference in the third blue section on the substitutes area there, in which it states that more teachers are out due to mental health concerns. So, that was a direct quote from one of our school districts. And again, this is a common theme in all of the professional networks that we're involved in. To highlight one more statement above, at the bottom of the slide, one district shared that they have over 121 classified vacancies, approximately 58 of which are special education instructional support positions. That's 20% of all their positions. We cited some statistics earlier related to teacher job satisfaction, but our working hypothesis is that classified employees experience many of the same challenges as our certificated staff, possibly even higher levels of that, with regard to burnout, cost of living, and job satisfaction.
We're looking at a number of strategies to build the workforce, and are in regular discussion within SBCEO, with our networks in Santa Barbara County and statewide, to brainstorm solutions to these ever-growing challenges. SBCEO has a couple of advantages when trying to overcome these obstacles. One is that we have a strong collaborative relationship with our unions. We've negotiated positive changes with our union partners, and we rely on them to tell us about the way their unit members are experiencing their work environment. Another point in our favor is the fact that fulfilling work is very important to applicants and employees, and our commitment to service and leadership in providing educational opportunities for underserved students gives us a competitive advantage. So, with regard to our short-term solutions listed here on the left, similar to some of the statements from local school districts that we shared, here at SBCEO, we are faced with significant levels of unfilled positions, as we've talked about, and we're constantly attempting to think of creative ways to expand our outreach and advertisement efforts. Our HR staff, in partnership with staff from other departments, have been attending numerous job fairs, not just the ones we put on, other events as well, and have made significant attempts to connect directly with potential applicants, such as making presentations at local colleges, and contacting what are called passive applicants on LinkedIn, as another example. We've also altered our advertising to include more emphasis on our employee benefits, and we're preparing for the final transition to a more modern recruitment system for classified positions that is user-friendly and business-efficient.
The more recent development we're focused on countywide, which I mentioned a while back, is how we can elevate the field of education. This is a very key area, in our opinion. This idea is intended to address a more long-term need to attract generations not yet in the workforce into the field of education. Some of the, this discussion has included marketing the rewarding aspects of working in education, including making a difference in the lives of future generations, a plethora of career pathway opportunities, that it's not just instructional career pathway opportunities, and generous employee benefits. We've been brainstorming ideas to work with partners in education to develop education-based internships, of which there are none at this point in time, and we began discussion with our Career Technical Education Team and other programs, ECE, to focus on apprenticeship pathway models in education. This year, even while we engage in short-term brainstorming, we're also committed to maintaining our longer-term goals, one of those being focusing on developing a stronger system of enhanced professional development for both managers and employees, in an effort to build internal capacity. Some of that will hopefully help address that turnover as well, to focus on making sure that people have that information when they come in. We also thought it was important to share that given the entire field of education is faced with these challenges, there are a number of statewide efforts that continue to help with staffing shortage. For example, there continues to be state-funded grant programs intended to support recruitment and retention of staff, and SBCEO continues to monitor and apply for those grant programs, and administer, when we get them, those grant programs, as well for the entire county. Also, at the state level, SBCEO division leads engage in ongoing networking and advocacy for legislation that will support our efforts to address the staffing shortage. For example, I serve as a legislative representative, working with other county offices, districts, and agencies, and organizations that monitor and support legislation entirely about the field of education. These types of opportunities allow us to have a voice in proposed legislation, and to advocate for language, again, that supports the solutions to some of these issues. Now, we recognize that the data we have shared today is not the most uplifting, we were a little nervous about that, but it does honestly represent the reality of what we are facing. There is no one simple solution to any of this. It really does mean that everyone has to work together statewide, nationwide, and we really need to move towards systemic change that will help with everything that we've been talking about. Overall, though, we are committed to continuing to support the staff that we have, to attract new staff, and to encourage people to come into the field of education while still maintaining all of our amazing programs, our high-quality service and programs, and that we operate on behalf of children, youth, and our community. So, thank you, everybody who's directly involved with that.
The thing I remember most about working was the phrase, "Don't shoot the messenger." So, you know, "Don't shoot the messenger." My goodness. Well, we're not alone, I guess that's the good news and the bad news, and we do have a challenge, and I am confident that we will figure out a long-term solution, but it sounds like it's going to take a while. So, whatever you can share with us to help us support you and the county in the work that you're doing, please keep us apprised. In the interest of time, do we have any comments?
My mic is on. First off, I just want to say thank you guys, to Judy's point, I know this must have been a little, may have been difficult or a little apprehensive, but it's really important information. And so, there's two comments for this, I know, I'll be brief for the sake of time. Just one, like, low-hanging fruit, kind of, and the idea to elevate the field. Inviting students to teacher award ceremonies are a great way to highlight the positive attributes of the field. I know that sometimes these ceremonies can be high-ticket items, so maybe having some tickets that go specifically to students, for them to see and get them inspired. Another question, in terms of, you know, if anything was possible, would workforce housing with childcare be part, would that be helpful?
Given the statistics that people cite for, you know, the, the cost of housing being a factor in whether they can take a job here, or stay in this area, I certainly think it would be a benefit that would give us a competitive advantage.
The reason why I ask that, recently, there was a letter to the Board of Supervisors by multiple, as you guys know, and so, part of that legislative advocacy, in addition to specifically education, but also in those necessary resources that educators need to be able to live here, and maybe that's something that we can look into as a board, more of how we can support that advocacy, so to be more attractive to teachers and...
One of those anecdotal statements from the district was specifically that they had lost 10 new hires because of the cost of living and housing issues. That's significant.
Yeah, I think the board definitely has a role in advocacy in our communities, with the boards of directors and with the cities as well, as far as housing. All right, thank you very much. And now, Dr. Salcedo, you're on.
Thank you very much, and while our teams, teams from ECE are here, and Amy and Mari are here, I just wanted to say thank you so much for the presentations today. It took a lot of work to compile, and there's so much there to make it streamlined for our presentation, so appreciate it. And also, I think it illustrates the cross-interdepartmental program work that happens on all levels, for both presentations. I know HR reaches out to every department, so connects there, but ECE too, we can see with special education, with our administrative services, with human resources, so want to say thank you. All right, so turning to my, the superintendent's report in your packet, just thank you for the opportunity to share all of that. We started off with the WASC accreditation news, which was great, and so, I think Renee is here, I think I saw you come in, there you are, so congratulations and thank you for that. And I'll, I will open up for any questions on the report, but I did want to add a few items at the top. Let's see here. First, a quick announcement, and making sure that the board has this on your calendars, that the Form 700, the conflict of interest forms from the county, are due at the end of this month. So, you all should have received an email, but I want to make sure that you have that on your radar to complete, so Form 700, looks like you've got that. Also wanted to mention, this wasn't here in my report, but we know that the state of emergency has now been lifted, so that is no longer with us, which is a sign of new times, but we are still coordinating test kits. So, we just received 45,300 test kits in our auditorium. Our team is coordinating, coordinating the distribution of those test kits by request, by school districts, public, charter, and private, so thank you for the team for distributing those. Nicole, I think you're here, she's been a main point person for us. Thank you, Matt. I also wanted to add, yeah, yeah, for, also wanted to add, this isn't on my notes, but for next month, we have invited Edwin Weaver, who's the Executive Director of Santa Maria Valley Fighting Back, who administers our program for tobacco use prevention education, and he'll come in and provide a presentation next month. With that, let me see if there are any questions that you may have had, or clarifications that I could provide from the superintendent's report. Okay? Oh, I think Mrs. Dord, yes?
On the CTE outreach, I appreciate all of that, and I was at a San Andres High School Board meeting, and the Ruffio High School student mentioned how, you know, this SBCEO, I can't remember who it was, was it Renee, or someone came to the, to the school, and they really, really enjoyed it.
What was that? Chris Patrani from our CTE Division, our program, thank you, for, I will, we will pass that on, thanks very much. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, back to you.
Okay, then, we'll move on to the consent agenda, we're looking at the minutes from the last meeting, registration credentials and other documents, and declaration of surplus, I'm looking for a motion in a second. Any discussion, questions?
Here.
I would like to abstain from the minutes, so I don't know if we could, we could remove the minutes and vote separate, so I can approve the consent agenda. the minutes and vote separate, so I can approve the consent agenda.
So let's do the minutes first.
Okay.
So we're going to, motion to approve in a second. Okay. Did we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Then, any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained. Michelle DeWort.
Moving on to the next, we have the registration of certificates and other documents and declaration of surplus. I'm looking for a motion.
Move.
In a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? None. All right. Onto the action items. Now, we have some good news when it comes to the budget. First of all, the Budget Committee, which consists of myself and Michelle and Maggie.
What's her name?
Yeah, what's her name? Maggie. Met on Tuesday with Mr. Torres and Nicole back there, and Deborah, to do a pretty intensive review of the P2 second interim report. And we're getting passed out here a revised long page from that budget report. There was a, there was an Excel, what do you call it? Formula error. Thank you. That word just flew out my line. And so they've corrected it on this report. I would just like to say that the Budget Committee did ask a lot of questions to make sure that we understood what was in the second interim report. And we had ups and we had downs. So some of the increases in income were offset by increases in expenses and so forth. But the bottom line was that we ended up, from the first interim report, with a deficit of 562,000, has now been replaced in P2 with a surplus of $374,533, which is a change If there are questions for the board, or Steve, if you would like to add anything to the discussion about P2? That's it.
No, but basically to say that, no, there wasn't much to add. I think you covered it well, and I did appreciate the engagement in the questions, and I'm happy that we're able to provide the information that you asked for.
A motion and a second to approve the second interim report. The Budget Committee meeting is, has recommended unanimously to move it forward to the board for approval. So do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
In a second. Do we have any discussion or questions about the P2 report? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? And now, I'd like to ask, Michelle, if you would fill in a portion of the audit report, which we also reviewed and approved for acceptance and filing, but there was a part of it that was a little sticky, so I'm going to let Michelle explain what it meant.
Thank you, Judy. Okay, we received our audit from Aid Bailey, and when our board met, or our Budget Committee met on Tuesday, Susan and the staff had arranged for Aid Bailey, our auditor, to attend the meeting virtually. So that was very appreciated. I think they caught what most of us all caught in the initial audit transmittal letter to the governing board. There was a question that surfaced on page two about a paragraph that said, "Significant risks identified." For me personally, it was very alarming, and, but we did with, when I came to the meeting, and she made, she was an auditor that's been an auditor for over 20 years, and she made assurances to us that no circumstances or events had occurred, and if there were any circumstances of any significant risk, they would be identified in the audit findings. And there were no mitigation measures or steps needed to correct or anything that was identified in the audit. And the reason why that language appeared in the transmittal letter to the governing board was that they had a change in their process midway through our audit. And they had added this language, and they needed to put the language in, and this is the only place they could add it. So in the future, they assured us that we will not see that language in the transmittal letter to the governing board, but it will be included in the management when they initially start the audit. That language is going forward, it's going to be included. And it, so thank you, Superintendent Salsedo, for making Aid Bailey available to us for this report. Thank you.
So, as I said, the Budget Committee has recommended that the board accept for filing the audit report. Could I hear a motion in a second? Any discussion or questions?
Thank you, Michelle.
All right. Then we will vote. All those in favor of accepting to file? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Moving on, we have an adoption of an emergency resolution of awarding contract without bidding and advertisement. And Mr. Torres, were you going to fill us in on what this was about?
So, you know, due to the storms in early January, our Hope Center incurred some damage due to moisture that accumulated over the course of those couple of weeks of storms. We had to relocate our staff that was there because, due to moisture mapping, which indicates where the moisture is in the building, as well as air testing, there were different air particulates that we found, and we found that wouldn't be at safe levels for our staff. So, as part of the mitigation for that, we need to treat the air and the surfaces, and that service is going to come at a cost that exceeds $15,000. And per public contract code, we are required to take anything to bid over $15,000 to formal competitive bidding. And this emergency resolution, due to the conditions and due to the fact that this would not allow us to sustain our services, and the formal bidding process would delay the work that we do and put our staff at risk, we need to, or we're requesting this emergency resolution so that we can proceed with this, with the service for the air and the surfaces kind of at a quicker rate. We'd be able to turn this around within the next week or two or so, so that we can get the building safe and have our staff return. Are there any questions?
This is a roll call vote. But we do need a motion in a second before we do that. So move.
No, a second.
Okay.
Question?
Discussion?
It may. The purpose makes total sense. Just from, I guess, transparency, would it make sense upon completion of the project to report back, project was done by company ABC, et cetera, just to sort of close the loop with the board?
And I think the contract amount is still being determined, but it's probably in the ballpark around $40,000. And because it has to do with the entire facility and its volume by, you know, cubic feet, it's probably best that we kind of report out what that final cost is and the final status.
I imagine it'll be a few months before we would get that done.
Actually, the treatment can be done within about four to five days, but the, because it's such a unique service, I think that's what the cost is. And the good thing is, it's kind of a nationally-rated service, so it's very viable in terms of what the costs are. But we've held off, obviously, on any of that until this was able to be done. But the service itself, we've made arrangements to do it in the event that we're able to approve this today. So, we've secured dates, and it would happen rather quickly, actually.
I just have a quick question. The process, so this, I'm assuming this is a moisture remediation, and you had a third-party do the air test to say that the levels were unacceptable, and then after the work, the remediation is done, are you going to have a second test to? Okay.
Great question. So I'll explain. We definitely will have a test before the space is occupied, and we will continue to do weekly testing ongoing by the same provider to ensure. And there's several other changes that were, things being addressed. They're all smaller amounts, wouldn't require this process, but we want to ensure that all that is working well, so we'll continue to have ongoing testing.
And that will all be in the contract with the mediator, the follow-up testing?
Yes, the treatment will be part of this contract, and then the ongoing testing is actually, it's not, well, I guess it is included in that contract, it's not coming at a cost, per se.
Right.
So, yes.
Okay. All right, then, roll call. Anna?
Okay, Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Mrs. Dany?
Aye.
Mrs. DeWort?
Aye.
Ms. Erman?
Aye.
Mrs. Foss?
Aye.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Mr. Porter?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you. And now, Susan, would you like to, oh, no, I'm sorry, we're on number 18. This is a board motion for reimbursement for the $65 for those of us that want to be reimbursed for attending the Santa Barbara County School Board Association Annual Dinner on Thursday, April 27. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And any abstentions? All right. Thank you very much. Now we go on to the School Board Association delegate election, and I'm going to ask Susan to please take care of that for us.
So, number, item number 19 and 20 really go hand in hand, the explanation that I'll give. But CSBA, the California School Boards Association, notified our board and myself that with their delegate assembly, and they convene a group of individuals statewide, meet twice a year, and work on advocacy topics, work on what is it that we're learning about in CSBA? What are, what can you in the field share with us as CSBA? That's what the assembly works toward. And so now is the time for the county board to have a vote as to who will represent that region of which you serve. So number 19, item 19, is really a county board member representative. And we would, you would get one vote, and in this case, there's only one person's name that's come forward for the region to represent and be that delegate, Arlie Kidd from Ventura. So, in a sense, there's some options for the board. Should you vote to move that name forward, that's one option. If you were to abstain, other counties will be voting as well, but there's just, you know, one individual, one vote for the county board for Arlie Kidd to be the delegate assembly person for this region. So let me stop there and see if there's any questions.
So, Arlie Kidd is a brand new name being brought forward. Not an incumbent, never served.
I don't know if the individual's an incumbent, but I know that the, oh, thank you, Michelle. Oh, great, I'm so glad.
So, Arlie Kidd is from Ventura, and there's only two counties in our region, it's Ventura and Santa Barbara County. And he was an appointed board member. He's been a teacher for 20 years. He was appointed, and then he was, since then, re-elected. And so he has volunteered. Rachel Urwick was, Ulrich was a, on, was our representative for many years, and it was just too much work, and so he's kind of stepping up, and he wants to, so this would be new for him. And I would like to make a motion to vote for Arlie Kidd.
Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Yeah, so I guess I'm just disappointed that he's only been a board member for barely a year, but he stepped up, and nobody else did, so that's not a criticism of him, it's just a bummer.
Well, any of us can, well, I can't, but any of you who would be interested in becoming it.
Speak now or forever hold your peace. We have a motion in a second, and that's discussion. And now we will have a vote. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstained? Motion passes. And number 20.
So number 20, very similar. This is, these are district representatives. We checked in, just to see if the opposite was true, which is, do district individuals vote for the county representative? That's a no. But the county board gets an opportunity to vote for the district representative, that's what you see here. And we just provided in the board book exactly what came to us from CSBA, so you saw the different applications from the individuals. In this case, it could be tricky. There are three individuals who've put their names forward and two votes for the board. So, and you see them there, William Frankie Caldera from Lompoc, Wendy Sims-Morton from Santa Barbara Unified, and Melanie Waffle from Orchid Union School District.
And Wendy Sims-Morton is incumbent?
Correct.
So you're looking for a nominee? We only get to vote for two of the three. So how would you suggest? All right, I'll take a motion with recommendation of two names.
I would like to move forward the motion to re-elect the incumbent, and Melanie Waffle from Orchid.
Any seconds? Discussion?
I, I was maybe hoping we could separate the nominations, maybe, because I would like to move forward and to vote for Melanie Waffle of Orchid Union, because she is a newer board member. She's been only a board member for about four years now, and I think she would be an excellent representative of our district. Also, and I think I would like to put forward William Caldera as well from Lompoc, just because I think it's a great opportunity for new board members to serve, because I think it's a great networking opportunity, and I think that somebody wanted to, you know, put their name forward, I think it's a, you know, I think it means a lot, and, you know, I think, you know, it's a risk that, you know, we hope that, we know that, because I think Wendy has served us well, but I think it could provide an opportunity for a new board member from Lompoc to represent that community would be wonderful.
I would like to make a little comment about Melanie Waffle. I can give a personal recommendation for her. She's dynamite, she's super. She, I think she's single-handedly is handling the social media on Facebook for Orchid District, because, oh, she has everything up there, and that's great, but.
Process-wise, we have a motion.
Yes, we need to take care of that.
If we decide to do the two on the motion, we can take care of that. If that fails, then, Michelle, you'll have the ability. So, in other words, if somebody wants to do what you want to do, we can just vote no on the first motion to take it to the next.
And then let you make the second one. All right. It is. Thank you. You'll figure that out.
Can I withdraw my motion if I concur?
Let's go ahead, let's go ahead and vote on Morton and Waffle. All those in favor?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five. Okay, all those opposed? And any abstentions? And any abstentions? Then the motion passes, and we have re-elected the incumbent, and Melanie Waffle. That's who we're putting our support behind.
Thank you for that. I do have some official paperwork to hand in, so I'll make sure to fill that out and send it in before March 15. Thank you very much.
Okey-dokey. Then, we have information items. We have the accountability report card for juvenile court and community schools, yay! Are there any questions or comments on that? Other than, hooray! And we have correspondence indicating that the juvenile court and community schools are now fully accredited by the Accrediting Commission for Schools, Western Association of Schools and Colleges, also known as WASC.
Going on that, I know, we've said it several times, but, I mean, having said in a district board, I can tell you, that's a huge amount of work to be able to make that happen. So to the whole team, I mean, congratulations and thank you.
And we have a personnel report. Any questions, comments about the personnel report? And then we go on to future agenda items. Other than hearing how the Hope situation evolves, I think that's the only thing that's come up today that will be continued. All right, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn to our next regular meeting to be held on April 6. Do we have a second?
Seconds.
All right, and any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We're done.